Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Council of the City of Southfield and it's being conducted as a committee as a whole, a special meeting, and then we'll have a committee as a whole at seven o'clock in the chambers. So first on the agenda this evening is Communications. Oh, we need, I'm sorry, we need Roll Call.
Hey, Ms. Seymour.
Yeah.
Mr. Loz.
Here.
Mr. Lian.
I'm here, in the back room.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Forcetti. Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Mr. Cybert.
Here.
You have something left in your presence.
All right. First on our agenda this evening is Communications, and I have a request from Pamela Gerald to speak. And you know the drill, but you have up to five minutes, and you have to state your name and address.
And I always time my speeches. Good evening, Council President and other members of council and the public. My name is Pamela Gerald. I am an independent voice for Southfield. If you are listening to my voice via YouTuber audio reproduction, I can be reached at P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155, or by telephone at 248-352-9188. I am just a phone call away. I've been in several study sessions with the Planning Commission regarding Walmart's request to open up a superstore in Southfield. The proposed location is 12 Mile and Southfield Road, the old St. Beach Church. After reading the traffic study, I am not, and I'll repeat, not convinced that Walmart belongs in Southfield, but more importantly, not in that location. The traffic at 12 Mile and Southfield Road intersection is terrible and very dangerous. This intersection is one of the most deadliest intersections in the state of Michigan as purported. To put a Walmart in this location would only compound the traffic problem. In addition, the residents in that area will have their home security blanket pull right from up under them. The reasons why a lot of these homeowners moved to Southfield and picked that location was to live in a peace and quiet environment. If the quality of life for my fellow residents is not what matters to this council, then I suggest that maybe we consider putting Walmart in your backyard where it's quite frequent. Let's put it across the street from City Hall in the vacant lot. If all that Walmart promised to do is good for the city, why not close the golf course, put the Walmart there? But then we would do a disservice to the golfers in the city of Southfield, so we can't do that either. So let's value our fellow residents and not put a Walmart in their backyard. Previously, at a regular televised meeting, I mentioned the perception of employees and residents alike, that race still determines who gets promoted, who gets a raise, who gets an acceptable contract, and how certain sections of the city's services are rendered to residents. It was stated that we don't discriminate here in this city, the city of Southfield. Let me tell you what's purported about Walmart. Walmart was found guilty for discrimination against blacks, Latinos, and women. Walmart was guilty of work abuse and retaliation and paid a hefty fine of over $500 million. Just like Denso, that's a half a billion dollars, billion with a B. If Walmart treats their loyal employees this way, how will they treat the residents of Southfield? Then and only then did Walmart hire a black CEO to try to render the problem, and as Chris Rock would say, "That ain't right." Are we working really hard to develop a real standard in Southfield? That standard not only includes A1 City Services, but it includes collaboration with the resident and neighboring community, Lakewood Village. I support that our neighbors and neighbors do not want this Walmart. Let's not forget that the Southfield standard also means that we understand where we should allow businesses to open up, and that those businesses fit in that section of the city because it will have a direct impact on the residents. Southfield, and that's a fact, is only a little over 26 square miles. We're big in service, big in values, we have a committed staff and committed residents, but we're not so big in size. So listen to your residents in that area. They have spoken at the November 28 Planning Commission meeting with over 650 people present. They do not want this Walmart in that location. It's not about the measly $100,000 in taxes that Walmart may bring to the city because we give million-dollar abatements for three to 12 years. What matters is unity in the community. What matters is the quality of life in Southfield, not the quantity of a certain race. What matters is the voice of the people, and the people say no to Walmart.
Next, we have Gerard Mullen. And we'll note, Madam Clerk, that Mr. Mullen is not present, and we'll move on to our special meeting agenda. First item is Brownfield's redevelopment plan and the increment financing authority amendment. Ms. Freeman, you're going to handle this, correct?
Yes, I am. Thank you so much. Mayor, Mayor, and the board. The city of Southfield has received a request from Tower Real Estate Ventures LLC, Hassan Jawad, to make an amendment to a Brownfield plan that the city council has approved in December of 2010. The Brownfield, the Southfield-Brownfield Redevelopment Authority approved their request on November 21, and we're bringing it forward for your consideration. The developer is here along with their consultant, Mark Quimby, to give a presentation of their request. At the end of their request, we would like to have a Rule 10 set a public hearing for January 14. As I said, just time to bring up Mark and Hassan. They're going to go over their request. They're looking to add three additional properties to the proposal that they had permitted in 2010.
Thank you, Shelley.
Please state your name and business address for the record.
Sure. Mark Quimby. I'm with S&amp;E. We're located at 43980 Plymouth Hills Boulevard in Plymouth, Michigan.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time today, our Councilman Mayor. We'd like to go over the amendments briefly and then answer any questions.
Yes.
So I wanted to give a brief overview of the original project that was approved in 2010. There were eligible activities of $395,000, and what that covered was primarily the demolition of a former People State Bank and the lead-in asbestos abatement prior to demo, and then also the site preparation for the plan.
Can you use the microphone?
You can move the podium.
I'm sorry. Or move the podium over into the microphone so everybody can hear you.
Sure. So as I was discussing, the eligible activities are about $395,000. They covered the demolition, lead-in asbestos abatement of the People State Bank property, and also the site improvements that were eligible for the development. It was a mixed-use development with a one- to two-story structure, depending on site plan approval, and it was a mix of commercial, retail, or residential uses depending on the property. The private investment was $1 to $1.75 million, job creation, 15 new jobs, and there was also an MBT from the state on this project. For this amendment, there's three new parcels that were added to make the development kind of work better. That will increase the total eligible activities by $258,000, and what that will cover is the demolition asbestos on the three residential structures on those parcels, the additional site improvements on those parcels, and then, you know, the effort to go through this amendment process. It will actually increase the private investment in the project from about, from the previous slide, $1 to $1.75, to about $2.5 million, and we'd like to have construction in the summer of next year. This figure shows kind of spatially what's going on. The previous amendment was, the areas in red that is not covered by the blue, the blue are the three new additional residential parcels. And then I wanted to go over just a couple key points for the plan. So the base taxable value of the parcels, all of them put together, including the new three parcels, is $622,000. That includes the value of the structures that are currently there. The planned final project has, we're estimating a value of $1.3 million, so that gives us that increment. So you have your base, and then what the property will be worth, and then only that increment, which is the difference between the base and the new taxes, would be what would be captured by the plan. The city council would continue, or the city and all the other tax jurisdictions would continue to get the taxes that are paid on that base value. There's a 28-year reimbursement period to pay back the eligible activities based on the increment, and the administrative capture is the B.R.A., they'll take 10% of that for their own management. And then we've got, also in the plan, Southfield will create their own revolving fund at the end of the project with the amount of tax increments that's left over within the plan year, which is by statute only 30 years, and then after that, everything will go back onto the rules of the goal value. That is the basis of this amendment, and we'd love to answer any questions, or if you have any other comments or anything else on the plan documents.
Mr. Forcetti?
The $622,000, it includes the three existing structures, those are the houses?
Yes.
And that's, that's $622,000?
Sure. So the $625 is for the whole thing.
Right.
It's for the whole, the whole project. So all, there's actually six parcels, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay.
And those six combined have a value of $622,000 and some change.
I thought we were talking about the three blues.
We are, but we wanted to be clear as far as, you know, there's, what the actual total amount is, because ultimately, when you approve this amendment, it will be that base value and that increment, even though we're only asking really for the three new parcels.
Mr. Lance?
Jeanette, the Jeanette parcel. I don't see, the item in blue, no, that's Goldwin. Are the houses on Jeanette?
Yes. There's a house on the Goldwin property, the Jeanette property here, and then the Hilton property here.
Okay. I remember you saying when you came here initially that you were going to close the street, Jeanette, the street facing Evergreen. I know you're not going to talk about it tonight, but it's on the plan, so if they're on it, then it's on the options. Why do you have to close the street?
I'll defer to Mr. Jawad for that, but I know that, you know, that's really a site plan approval issue.
And Mr. Jawad, if you could give your name and address for the record.
Hassan Jawad, Tower Real Estate Ventures, 26595 Evergreen Road, Southfield, Michigan, 48076. Mr. Lance, to answer your question about the closing of Jeanette, it is something that we have considered and have looked at in a number of our draft site plans. It is not a final conclusion yet, and ultimately, we'll have to go before planning and go through a site plan approval process where it will come before council once again. And then to go back to your other question about why would, why would we want to or need to, if you've been to the site, we are looking to ultimately gain as much parking as we possibly can to avoid parking from being, from overflowing into the side streets, which is where a lot of parking is currently going with the existing center, that because of the success of the current center, and the depths that are currently allotted at Evergreen. We're trying to get 200-foot depths for our developments on Evergreen and to prevent vehicles from overflowing into the residential area, so that's something that we can ultimately discuss if, you know, if this is approved and we ultimately make our way through site plan.
Okay. Will there be houses on Jeanette when you're building, opening? Are you, you're taking down all the houses that are on Jeanette?
The only, the only, according to this plan, there is currently only one residential home on Jeanette, which is the 19751 Jeanette, which is right here.
And that's going to be there?
That, that will, that will actually come down. That's, that's part, that's part of the amended plan now. Across the street on the other Jeanette parcel, that is a tree parcel currently with a drainage, with a drainage ditch, and there is no, there is no property there currently.
You will have your, your building set, right, on Jeanette?
Are you looking to replicate what you built on this side, but perhaps with two stories?
Okay, so.
Are you building on Jeanette?
We are building, the new, the new structure is actually going to be on the bank site at 25, 250 Evergreen, just to the north of the existing site. So what you see currently happening to the south with the buildings and the parking, you can almost take a rubber stamp, at least from a footprint standpoint, and replicate it on the other side of the street. So, so at the bank site, it will be a shared scenario of both building and parking when all is said and done.
Where is the opening to Evergreen on the other parcel?
Currently, you have an opening there on, on, well, actually, on the other parcel, the only opening to the bank site, the bank site has its own driveway. You cannot come in off of Jeanette currently and turn into the bank site. You have to actually.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. You have to actually come in there. And then there's an exit where there usually would be a drive-through on the other side. Those are the current driveways that are currently there, but you cannot come in off of, off of Jeanette or Goldwin and actually access the bank site currently.
Okay. Question. It says a fire. Not area, you can actually, well, you're off the street. How do the fire trucks get to that area?
Okay. I will, without, without getting into major details, because again, I think it's best served for the site plan to answer your questions the best that I possibly can tonight. The concepts that we are working with, because this did come up when the Brownfield was originally approved by council, and it was, it was a good point made by you, is a couple different things. One, we have already spoken with the neighborhood, and we'll intend to speak with the neighborhood once again before we do anything to ensure that the neighborhood is in support of what we're doing, as well as get our way through staff again and make sure that staff is, is on board, as well as the various departments, police and fire are on board with what we're doing. But I will tell you that we are working with a concept plan that allows us to gain parking on Jeanette without necessarily closing the street and leaving it accessible for emergency vehicles, and that's something that we're working on, and that was something that was taken into consideration based upon the last amendment or Brownfield, a plan that was approved.
That's the first positive thing here and now.
Okay.
But I will not approve something that allegedly you go to build. What are you thinking about?
Well, I'm, I'm telling you everything that I know up to this point, as opposed to there being any sort of surprise later on. I don't want anybody having a misconception that we are presenting one thing here tonight and coming back to do something else.
And how about the fire department? Do you control them?
We haven't submitted a site plan yet to even get to that point currently tonight. We're just trying to get the Brownfield amended to amend the plan that was already approved.
Well, how could I, how could I vote for something else that another part of it is in field, and you don't know what's going to happen with it?
Can I just make a clip? This is really to set the foundation for a future development project. So right now, we're just setting the foundation, and Mr. Jawad moves through the process, when it comes to city council, if you decide you are not in favor of what he's looking to do, you can deny it, and if he chooses to do something, you know, this is just the foundation for it. So you have the ultimate control when the plan comes back, but in order for him to get the site prepared, he needs to get the properties added to the Brownfield plan.
So it's. That doesn't make sense, because I see a plan there now, and then, no, to me, it doesn't make sense, because you have a plan now, and, and there's something wrong, it's not wrong, I mean, it's not correct yet, about the fire department, about the safety of the area and all that, it's, it's up to the air. That's something you're going to tell us about when you get to it.
I'm, I'm telling, I'm telling you everything that we know up to this point.
I know. And I understand what you're saying.
And that's, and that's, and that's why you don't see a plan before you.
But you understand what I'm saying?
I am, and I'm doing my best to explain it and clarify it so that there are no surprises now or later.
Mr. Lance, this is really about giving the decision or options.
Yeah, but it's the beginning of everything else.
Well, and.
It's all, it's all included.
It will come back to planning and eventually to this table. Tonight is just about amending a Brownfield that already exists.
But I see a plan out there.
But there is no building. There is the existing building with the.
But there's a name of the street, there's names of streets and everything. You're going to do it.
I, I don't believe that's true.
What do you mean, you don't believe that's true? What's in front of you? What do you see?
What I'm looking at are three, adding three parcels and amending a Brownfield.
I know, I know. But how can you amend anything when, when we don't know the future? He knows the future plan, it's not a, it's not an exact future plan yet.
Well, in order to, for him to proceed, he needs the amended Brownfield, so that he, part of his financing to redevelop these parcels, one of the properties, is this correct, Mr. Jawad, that one of your properties, a house that you're planning to demolish, is riddled with mold?
Yeah, it's currently, it's currently condemned, and it is.
Yes.
It's secure.
That's all besides the point. All right. My answer will be no, you can look, wait until the oak land comes.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Seymour.
Yeah, thank you. The, the one parcel, there's no house. The three parcels with the blue lines, do they currently have homes on them? They do. And do you own that home?
Yes.
You own, you own one there?
Currently, the, the home that is on Goldwin is, the home that Mr. Cybert was referring to, that is.
It's torn down anyway.
That needs to be tore down. It is, it's, it's a hazard, it's filled with mold, and it's currently secured to keep anybody from getting inside. The building department has also gone through there, and they concur that it does need to be demolished. The home on, at 19751 Jeanette is, is currently rented, and the tenant is, is aware of our plans. And then the home that is actually on Hilton, I have personally been staying in so that I could have a bird's eye view of what happens with our properties and the development and knowing what that area needs, so the only person who would be relocated on that home is me.
Okay. If, I guess, I've got several questions in the room in order to ask them. I know, we're a little familiar with what you have talked about, but if, what is the advantage? If you, if you, the site plan, it's important for the site plan to have this in Brownfield, are parcels added to the, why is that so? You mean, why is it important to have these parcels added to Brownfield? What's advantage to that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean.
And are you planning on using those for parking? What's the plan for those?
Ultimately, parking is, is really the, the key for the residential parcels. The majority of the footprint of the building is going to be closer towards Evergreen, but ultimately, we need, we are in, we're in desperate need of getting parking.
So these, these other sites that are, I know you talked in the site plan about being one or two-story structures, so that basically would be parking, regardless of whether you're going to two-story or one-story, you need that parking, is that correct?
Yes.
That's what I understand. But that's all, no question.
I, I would note that if you go by there on a weekday, there is no parking between the current businesses that are there. There's a handicap in the, in the parking, and obviously, the, adds another building, you've got more parking issues.
What about the second?
It's, the current situation is, as it stands, without adding these parcels to our, our plans, is restrictive and prohibitive to attracting new tenants, because if there is not enough parking, we're going to have a hard time getting, getting, getting new tenants for the, for the new development, whether it's a single-story or a two-story type scenario.
Can I, can I follow up?
Yeah, sure.
Well, where is the, if you don't get two-story, where is the new development going?
It would, it would go on, on the bank site, where Shelley's showing.
Okay. So that's, that's not, nothing dedicated there, or is it?
Because right now, it's all speculative, so.
So there's no, there's no potential site plan for them?
There is no plan, no plan has been developed. They are looking, again, just to set the foundation, and they are taking a risk and moving forward with their project. In order to secure their incentives that they receive from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, they need to have some assistance from the city of Southfield, so we're, yeah.
Yeah, I understand all that.
So this is just setting the foundation, and then the, the plans have not been officially developed, so.
So you're saying it's in one or two stories? It's not, it's not important to your plan, is it, to be one or whatever?
Um.
Again, I'm concerned about speculations.
I'll, 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 I'll say this, and from a financial standpoint and from a developer standpoint, if we cannot fill 100% of what we build, we have, we're not going to build more than what we can necessarily, what we can necessarily fill. The last thing we want to do is to be sitting on empty space, so if it's not spoken for, we're not building it, and that's the way we approached our first development. And then, to demonstrate our commitment to this development and this property, when we originally came before you in 2010, we, we have, we have persisted and moved forward in acquiring additional properties even when the economy was really not in a position to be looking to build new properties or acquire new properties or attempt to even lease new properties. I will tell you that five years to the date, as of this December, with our existing plaza that was built five years ago, we have not achieved 100% occupancy up until recently. We are now 100% occupied in the current development. So the last thing that I want to do is build something that we cannot lease out, so if it's not spoken for, the last thing I want to do is sit on empty space, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Loz?
Yeah, and this might be a question that probably is reserved for site plan, but I don't know if you can speak to it now. When another development, probably, I think it was just north of here, came before council, there was concerns about the staggered back, and I see that there's a discrepancy between the far east border on Jeanette and the far east border on Hilton. Do you have a, are you going to, when you come up with a development, expand it all the way to the border, or are you going to have a clean break?
You're, you're referring to?
Exactly right.
Okay. I, I can't force people to sell their homes, and I'll tell you that it's, especially the property on Goldwin, and the building department will attest to know what we went through to actually acquire that property. It was quite a bit of work, and it took a, a lot of time and effort and energy to ensure that we were actually able to acquire that property without it actually going back to the bank and making its way through the mill all over again. So we will do our best to maintain, as you can see, as straight a line as, as possible so that it stays consistent from 10 Mile all the way up to the golf course when, when all is said and done. Now, one thing that is, that is kind of nice is on the opposite end of the 19751 Goldwin property, council has already approved that a parking space for what was the old kinder care. So we are starting to create a consistent line all the way to the golf course to allow for, for that 200-foot depth on Evergreen. Unfortunately, not everybody wants to sell at the same time or feels that, you know, sometimes it's a financial scenario too, because some of the properties may not be affordable. It's parking, you have to remember that there's no revenue to, to regain from putting in a, a park in line. There's no square footage that you can lease, and regain some of your revenue, but we are, we are doing our best to maintain as, consistently as straight line as possible. It just happens that the property on Hilton is kind of a sliver half, a sliver, a sliver half lot, but as the properties become available, and if it makes sense financially, we will continue to invest in the community and hopefully do some really good things on Evergreen.
And you're, you're alluding to my, my other question, which is the cooperation of the neighbors that are there. I mean, can you speak to that?
I can.
Maybe going from north to south? I don't know.
I can. With our existing development that is in place, we follow a standard protocol. We, before we ever put a shovel in the ground, we met with the neighbors, and as opposed to saying, "This is what we are going to do," we said, "What would you like to see here, and what would you not like to see here? What works well for you, and what suggestions and ideas do you have?" That is what we did prior to building the city center plaza, which is where the Jimmy Johns is currently, and then we also, after we acquired the, the bank property, we actually sent out about 265 mailers to the Everclear Neighborhood Association, which is basically Jeanette, Hilton, Goldwin, I'm missing one, Jeanette, Hilton, Goldwin, and the last street up to the golf, up to the golf course.
Billmore.
Billmore. Basically, hit all of those houses in that neighborhood, approximately three blocks in, and we held a, a meeting at the Parks and Rec building and said, "This is what we're potentially looking to do here before we do anything. We'd like to get some input, and we'd like to get some feedback, and as we draw near to site plan, again, we will go back out once again and invite the neighborhood out to provide feedback, suggestions, recommendations." And I will tell you that from our last meeting, we did send out surveys after the fact that asked the neighbors various questions in regards to what they would like to see, what they wouldn't like to see, are they for or against the project, do they have any suggestions, et cetera, and we have, out of the, probably 40 or so people that showed up to the first meeting, we have approximately two dozen to 30 responses, with the majority of them for open to the development. development. Because I think we have a proven track record. We've delivered upon exactly what we said we were going to with our first development. When the economy was tight, we didn't cave to cash for gold or fly-by-night insurance companies. We sat on empty space to be very, very selective, to make sure that we put tenants who were going to be a benefit to this area. And with our two most recent openings, we had the Just Bake that opened up in February, which occupied one of our vacant spaces. They are now the top grossing Just Bake of all 14 locations in the state of Michigan. The Wingstop that just opened up, and it's very, very new, and they haven't even been in existence a little over a month, they are ranking in the top 20 nationally, which being in existence for the time that they are is unheard of and off the charts. So, what that's also done, and I'll give a little bit of sneak peek because I don't want to talk too much about prospective scenarios, but they are so happy with the results that they received here in Southfield, that they said if in fact we did move forward and do something with a mixed-use two-story type development, they would actually be interested in putting their corporate offices in such a development as well. So, there's really positive things, I think, that can come out of this if we do it right and we're selective about who we choose as our tenants and provide a viable plan.
That's incredibly encouraging to hear, especially with the neighborhood participation. Because if you don't hear from the residents, we certainly will.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Crager?
Yeah, this is for my own education. When you made your presentation, you quoted the number that's on your presentation, $622,000. In the book, it's $654,500. Are we talking the same number or are we talking two different numbers?
No, they're two different, they're two different numbers. The first number, the $654 number, that's the total eligible activities, which would be the original amount that you approved, which is like $350 something?
$395.
$395. And then, the new number that you're approving now for this amendment was the $258. This $622, they just happen to be kind of close, so it's easily to be confused, but that's actually the base taxable value on the property.
Oh, I see. All right, all right. I just wondered if I was misinterpreting it was.
No, I triple-checked it because my eye caught it as well because they're kind of close, so I just wanted to make sure I wasn't mixing up what I was talking about.
Is there anything else? If not, we need a set of public hearing for this that will necessitate rule 10.
Remove rule 10.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Prokotsky, supported by Mr. Maugh. So, rule 10, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's register, we have one known, Mr. Lamb.
Chairman, what was the recommended resolution? It's Page 3, December 3, 2012.
And Mr. Prokotsky may add that we're moving this because of the public hearing on...
On the 28th, they said January 14th.
The 14th, all right, I'll support that.
It's January 14th and still the 28th?
Right, because we already have a big agenda. All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Prokotsky, supported by Mr. Maugh, to have a public hearing on the Brownfield amendment for this site on 25250 Evergreen Road, and 25210, I should add. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Lamb? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will move on to the second item on our agenda, that's the presentation for Inglewood Parking and Stormwater Improvement Project. But Mr. Karlik is coming to our podium, just to remind the council that we, I think it's now the fourth presentation we've had, step by step, as we move ahead with the improvements for parking at Inglewood Park.
Is that a question, ma'am?
May, Mr. President, if you could pass down the presentation, we just want to see if I will have to be...
Sure.
Good evening. As your compliments, Cyber mentioned with to you about three times on this project this year, just in terms of the grant applications and accepting the grants. This meeting is, or presentation is more in regard, just to clarify what we're talking about and the financing proposal for the project. You can see the outline area is the existing parking lot. I think most of you are familiar with Inglewood Park. It is our most popular park on 12 Fire Road between Lobster and Evergreen. So, this project started out as a grant project. Staff had come to me and saying, you know, with this perpetual parking problem there, what can we do? Is there anything we can do to expand the parking, alleviate some of this parking? We frequently go on grass for ball fields type things, and of course, the playlot is very popular in this area. So, there is an aisle right there is already existing. It only has parking on the north side of that aisle, so it's very easy to add 50 cars. The aisle is already there for us. So, this grant is one of the Rouge grants that we have been getting in recent years. We keep thinking it's the last round, but they are still getting money from the EPA. So, we go back with kind of smaller grants than we originally did, like Carpenter Lake. So, this Rouge grant, it means that it has to be sustainable and environmentally sensitive. So, this would need to be some form of pervious pavement. We have lots at Beachwood and at Carpenter Lake that are pervious. We'll look at what materials are available. It has not been designed, looking at the pavers, but more likely, we're going to look at pervious concrete in this location. This major parking lot here, the original parking lot is about 20 to 25 years old, and so the surface is cracked and faded, and so as long as we're on the site, we've decided to look at resurfacing the entire lot. So, that's why the project got larger than the grant project. And talking with administration, we're looking at a LRF loan for the project. That would, you know, with our current financial situation, that would alleviate some of the financial pressure of a large parking project on our department. So, there is an amortization schedule that's attached to your council item, and we'll be coming back the next council meeting with a formal resolution to adopt that. There any questions pertaining to?
Mayor?
Yeah. As we put these parking spots in, is there any plans to put walkways to connect them? So, if someone gets out of the car, instead of walking through the parking lot, is there going to be any, like putting a walkway along the other side of the cars or some kind of walking? Because that always seems to be the issue.
Yeah, originally, when the grant, we actually had a sidewalk that entire distance. The granting agency said they wouldn't fund that. So, right now, it's not on the plan, but if it fits within that budget, then I would like to put that in there.
Because even if we use the same type of surface that we use for the walking?
Even if it's not concrete?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, then that would be very easy to do because that's quite reasonable price.
Yeah, but just so that we're controlling the path of people walking and it's not going back into the...
I want to address something like we, originally, years ago, we put the path, the main pathway south, and then we threw a grate across it.
Exactly.
That's something that drives me crazy a little bit. I want to fix that little issue there.
Now, the bioswale that's in front of the place gate, I usually think of a bioswale as being a ditch. I'm concerned because the kids just get out of the car and run into it.
And they run in. Actually, that is a ditch right now. Yeah, and so this will, obviously, we're trying to look at something that's not, not as quite as mixed plant and something that's colorful because there's children there, but also something that's tough, so if they do run across it, we're okay, and not create a trip hazard. Probably with the bioswale, we're going to be able to lift that swale a little bit so it's not as deep as it is now because it'll permeate the water instead of dragging it down.
Again, with that, I was thinking if we put some defined gravel areas that if the children want us to run through there, it would not be... Because you've done a great job with the other bioswale, so I can imagine the type of green we're going to put in there, just to, you give them an option.
Kind of like, well, we never, in some spots there, and, you know, because soon as it was up, we never were able to go grass. So, definitely, we'll try to keep the kids in mind and how they're going to get through there quickly.
So, my other question is, when you're at the place, our landscaping around the Lactica has been not...
We haven't been able to get the grass freshly around the steps and that stone wall, so that's something I'd like to look at.
I agree there because it's such a wonderful spot, but it looks like it's not that stuff or not made.
If we would have been able to put a six-foot fence around it for a while, I mean, even during the opening and during the construction, it's very difficult. Keeps kids off. So, we'll look at that area where we have erosion around the rock wall and the steps up and see if we can do something like that.
And I know that, I know that there are children and families out there year-round, but if we could put a temporary for the spring, that would keep it off until it can...
At least that stuff gets dusted.
Because it looks uncut. I look at all time, and there's actually some ditches in the landscaping that kids fall on time with, so they don't think about it.
Okay, take a look at that while we're there because I think that would fit in within our budget.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Prokotsky?
Yeah. Who's that?
You.
Yeah, the new parking lot. The husband one is going to be replaced or resurfaced?
Resurfaced.
And is it going to be matching the previous one that you've been putting?
No, we're just going to...
It'll look differently?
It'll look slightly different, yes. We talked to the granting agency about just doing bioswales, and they said, "You can just do bioswales, you can just do asphalt pavement, we won't participate in that." So, we went to grant to, and I think we'll have, you know, a little interpretive sign there that says, "This is why this is different." I mean, we'll still try to make it compatible.
Any other questions, Ms. Burden?
I mentioned the other day, just making sure we can be in Inglewood Park, that it should be an easier access in and out.
Look at that on the west side, yeah, because that's a circular lot.
Any other questions? I have one. This is basically sheet drain, right? It just rolls off?
Yeah, there's some catch basins in the lot now, I think.
Yeah, in the center or something.
This one in, like in here, but as far as this permeable, there's still going to be, there'll be the pavement and there'll be some kind of stone under that. It'll still have a pipe that, for overflow or whatever, if it doesn't drain, there's a catch basin out here.
All right, Ms. Seymour?
I do. Aren't you using pavers? Are you using what's similar to what we have on the other side of the...
I will not use the asphalt because I think we've all experienced what that product is like, but I have seen...
You mean, you don't like what's out here on the...
This lot, because of the, you know, the parking and the turning, and our summers are 100 degrees now, and it's just not tough enough. So, I'm looking at porous concrete that I've seen at several trade shows. I think it's pretty tough. You still would have the cleaning issue on occasion to keep it porous.
But is it, is it, it's not pavers?
It's not pavers, it's a poured-in-place product. I'm still looking at the pavers too, but I would like to try the porous concrete.
Okay, but it won't have that gravelly sense that I...
It'll look a little gravelly, but it'll be tougher. It will not, you cannot dislodge the stones or anything like that.
Okay. I have a feeling this one's a little hard on tires.
I think the tires are a little harder on the pavement than vice versa, yeah. It's just soft material, and there's not enough binding material to support it structurally.
So, it's going to damage a little bit as you're...
Each time you turn it, 100 degrees out, you know, you're wearing on it.
This item will come back next Monday night at a regular meeting. This evening, Ms. Karlik is asking for a consensus so that she can bring the formal plan back to us on the tenth. So, Mr. Prokotsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Ms. Maugh?
Yes.
Yes.
And I would, you have a question?
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is municipal lawn perimeter pathway loop, and this is Mr. Prokotsky. Thank you, Ms. Karlik.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you may recall, I was last here before you to discuss this at your September 10th meeting, to discuss the possibility of installing a perimeter pathway loop. The genesis of this project was, the original intended hope to make Evergreen Road accessible with the library and the municipal complex. And we originally came to you with the thought of simply making a connection from Evergreen to the shortest distance and tying in with the existing loop system. As the staff discussed it, agenda staff with other departments, it brought to my attention that Parks and Recreation has had a plan pretty much on the books for about 20 years of doing a circular loop in the front lawn, and I thought it was a great idea for many reasons. As you know, we're trying to make the city center district more pedestrian-friendly and also put life on the street. There are a number of ADA issues with lack of accessibility to the front lawn, especially during Parks and Recreation events. And as we try to promote healthy living, and a 30-minute heart-healthy walk, two and a half times around the loop approximately would be a mile. And a 30-minute walk is approximately a mile and a half for most of the average American. So, council said, "Okay, Terry, why don't you work with the city engineer HRC and other departments and prepare preliminary cost estimates and identify potential funding sources, which we're bringing back here tonight." Now, when you get engineers involved, they want to make sure that all the bases are covered. And the engineer said, "Well, if, you know, we're going to have this four-inch sidewalk around here, why don't we make it five inches so a truck can drive on it?" And then, facility says, "Oh, it'd be nice if we had a nice driveway path so we can get our trucks onto the site, let's add a driveway here." And oh, by the way, we don't have our barrier-free parking spaces accessible in here, and we should think about drainage or removing trees. And I think we all agree that an eight-foot wide sidewalk is better than a five-foot wide sidewalk. Well, when all the bells and whistles were added up and you included contingency and engineering, now we have $111,000 job. But, the good news is, the city center is very committed and excited to this project, and they've set aside a significant amount of funds to support this job, similar to what they did in partnering with the city on doing decorative crosswalks on Civic Center Drive. Because of the ADA issues, Community Development Block Grant has a good portion of money set aside that we've reviewed with HUD and said this would be an eligible project. We'd have to bid this out with the spake and wage rates. We looked at the existing Metro Act, which is only a small portion, and again, we're talking about the area in red for Phase One of the loop, but the Metro Act funds would cover anything in the right way. We also have the tree fund, and we looked at between Parks and Rec, the engineering department, purchasing, and myself, we could probably do the majority of plans and specs in-house and have HRC either in-kind or at a nominal fee, you know, review their final plans and help us get out to bid. So, tonight, I'm just looking for permission from the council to actually go out to bid, prepare plans and specifications, get real numbers, and come back to this honorable body prior to any construction. Our intent would be, if we could, we'd like to have it constructed in the spring of 2013 prior to any major events happening, taking place on the front lawn. And by that time, we'll have real, real construction costs and we'll fine-tune our funding sources. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Okay, Ms. Maugh.
Thank you. Terry, how much is the city center hoping to give?
Well, they initially committed $30,000.
$30,000?
Yes, but they said, "If you need more money, come back to us, and this is a project that we're willing to support." So, I have my board meeting next week, and one of the things... Um, so I have my board meeting next week, and, uh, one of the things that, um, that we might be able to do is push one of our projects off the fiscal year, 2013, 14, and move, move this project up, so, uh, they could possibly have almost twice as much money.
I have a problem, quite frankly, with city center money coming on our property. I think they've got plenty of need for it, uh, on their own site, and I, I have a, I want to talk about this because I think I'm really not in favor of this project, and I want to tell you why. Um, Parks and Rec had Mary Carlock have designed, uh, basically this idea, the con, the concept of a circular, uh, walk, uh, many, many years ago, it never got, uh, approved as a project. It was never done, and there's a reason for it being never being done. Parks and Rec could have done it any time, it never came, uh, forward, it was something that they would like to talk about, or somebody talked about, but never got approved, and as I said, I think there's a reason for that. And my concern is that we're trying to make something, we're, we're basically destroying a beautiful park by putting in this walkway, or something that was known basically only used in warm weather. Now, people, you can say that people will come out here and walk in the wintertime, but what you're gonna find is, this will be used for bicycles, and this is of all the signs you want, it'll be used for bicycles and it'll be used for skateboards. But the other talk was that, um, people in wheelchairs would be out there, well, in the wintertime, I don't think they will be, no matter what we do. I am in favor of putting some access to the parking, I think we can do that, but I'm, I'm, I think that's gonna destroy a site that's a beautiful park right now, and I'm opposed to putting, um, a, a loop project here. I feel that if people are going to come over here to walk, they're not gonna bring wheelchairs in bad weather. It, it, I think it's redundant, and I think it's a mistake. We're gonna be destroying something very valuable.
Through the chair, if I could, this time? Um, first, um, Parks and Rec has a number of events, um, on the lawn, and a number of people with disabilities and clearly wheelchairs do participate in that, and they are limited access to, to those events. Our current barrier-free parking is in this area here, and there's no ADA access to the front lawn at all.
But that's what I said I would like to see done.
Uh, this is located on the perimeter of the space so that it doesn't intringe on the green, greenness or the openness of the events. Uh, I, I really do see this as, as encouraging walking, um, for residents, for employees, and for businesses, and the students in the community. Uh, and I do think that it'll get used year-round. Um, I don't think people are gonna come here to bike specifically. One, uh, one day, when I was leaving work here, I saw three, uh, middle-aged women walking, three abreast, in the parking lot down the driveways, and I stopped and, whenever I get a chance, uh, I try to walk every day out there at lunchtime in, in the early evenings before council meetings, and I talk to people, and I ask them, "What would they like to see? What could we do better?" And the number-one thing they said is, "Put more pathways in," and I said, "Do you live here or do you work here?" And they said, "Well, actually, all three of our sons are at the ice arena, and we come here a couple times a week, and we have a couple hours to kill, and we're just out walking, and it would be nice." That's a whole, a whole nother audience of people who come here that are not being served as well as we could be. Uh, and, and again, we're trying to promote healthy living, we're trying to promote activity. There's nothing that says this is a friendly community than seeing people walk down the street, especially when, in twos and threes, whether it's during the day or evening. I personally enjoy a brisk walk in the wintertime, it's refreshing. Uh, and again, it's not about me, but, um, the city center is, thinks this is a, a high priority, they want to continue putting benches and trash receptacles and doing those things, but they, they really do see the benefit of this, and we want to partner with the city. Um, and I, I'm not gonna speak for Parks and Rec, I know, I know Ms. Carlock's here, and she can maybe weigh in. I think, design-wise, this, this has an aesthetic to it, a formalization of the old Stedion parks plans. We have a beautiful alley of trees that people can walk between, so it's not like we're starting from a blank canvas. Those trees were planted twenty years ago for something like this, and, uh, again, all I'm asking the council is to allow us to go out to bid. Prices come in double, or we can identify the funding sources, then we either have to change our plans or our, you know, go back to the drawing board.
Let me respond to that, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm really not excited about the city center being excited about doing something on our property. They have plenty to do on their property, that just, that does not move me. The problem is, you talk about so many things that TNR does out here, they don't do that many things out here. That, I know exactly what they do, because I come here all the time, and to say that this is going, you know, it's gonna be mostly available in summer, it will, you can walk in the fall, in the winter weather, and I, I think it's, it's drawing an area that should be, that is a park and should be a park, I'm not in favor of it, we have plenty of place to walk here, people walk in this building in bad weather, you know they do, they walk all the way around here. There's plenty of opportunities, I think this is a justification, I'm not gonna support it.
All right, um, Mayor Lawrence?
Yes, uh, I think this is a great idea. I too see people walking, especially from the site thousands, walking their dogs, or walking that area. Um, if you go to, uh, really vibrant, um, the communities, they'll have people that will, on lunchtime will literally sit down and have their lunch sitting on the grass. Um, some other things that are happening, um, green space is not supposed to be, in my mind, just for you to sit there and look at, it should be something that encourages people to enjoy it, and I think this will, uh, this would be a great addition. Um, I have a question on this diagram, there's this circle here, what is that?
That's, that's through the chair, that's the, uh, existing, uh, circle pathway in front of the library.
Okay, that's existing.
That's existing.
Okay. I think this is good, I can, you know, I do the mayor's walk at Inglewood, I can see, and we always have, um, that's pretty much the walking path in the city, is Inglewood. I see this, and we have, you know, we talk about our young people that live, um, in Lawrence Tech and wanting to be outside and jogging or running or whatever, but, uh, I really like this, and it, um, are we gonna add additional shrub trees, or are we just like, what are we gonna do with the landscaping?
Well, through the chair, um, we'd like to work the, uh, pathway through the double row of trees that are existing.
Yeah.
There, there are a few that might have to be relocated or dug up and replaced, and then some additional trees will be planted, but that's, that's all that's called for, is just the few that, um, might need to be adjusted in this area here. Um, and, you know, later on, other things like, uh, markers and benches could be added, but I think the important thing is getting the walking loop in first.
You know, we, we talk so much, and, and I'm very active in the Less Move program, and, and we talk about communities, uh, providing leadership when it comes to healthy living and, and venues, and, and encouraging people to get out and be healthy, and to me, this is one of the ways that we as a community, and it attracts younger families, to say, you know, I can go into a community, there's people out walking, it's, it's, um, it definitely sets a statement that is safe, and it's, it's, uh, to me, shows our leadership that we want a community that's healthy, we're gonna support it, it doesn't cost us, you know, we, once we build it, it's just a matter of people using it. Um, so I'd be like, I do, do have one question, because at Inglewood, we don't plow or anything, if it rains, it just rains. If we put sidewalk in there, will that then require us to have to plow it in the wintertime, or what would we do?
Again, that's a, that's a decision that the city can make in working with Parks and Rec, whether or not they want to maintain it throughout the winter or not. We know the people have footpaths, and if I could, um, if you're familiar with Bryant Park in New York City, the park that was located next to the library, the public library, that was taken over by drug dealers and prostitution and homeless people, and the city decided that we're gonna recover this green space back, and all of the businesses chipped in. Now it's one of the most vibrant, thriving urban parks in the world, and people look at, um, they have plays, theater, people sit out there for lunch, people walk around there, they play chess, and it, it is now one of the, you know, top, not only tourist attractions, but it's a, it's a vi, it was a vibrant piece to revitalizing that part of the city. Locally, Shane Park in Birmingham was another, kind of underutilized park space, it was a lot of parking lot, and they've decided to take that back and create green space, fountain, sculpture, um, and program that space, and now it's the living hub of the civic center in Birmingham. And I, I see this park as, as being something akin to that. We already have a beautiful setting. There's nothing like looking at, um, to the north and seeing those beautiful fountains with the library and the, the majestic buildings across the street, the grandeur of civic center. Uh, you know, I enjoy seeing kids out playing frisbee, people walking their dogs, and the different events that we have.
Well, you have to put yourself there too, and walk your dog.
Um, I, I'm gonna respectfully just disagree with some of the comments said earlier, because I don't think that this is an, a, a vision that's just gonna bring out cyclists or skateboarders en masse, um, and even if it did, I don't think I would have a problem with that, because I, I think, maybe you can expand on this, Terry, that this isn't an ice, this is not an isolated loop onto itself, that this fits in with a broader vision of what we've been talking about, um, for a while, about developing across the street and making it more walkable. I think the idea is, is that we want to bring people out, um, and, and come, uh, and enjoy it, and better connect the city to the people who work, live, and play here. So can you, can you talk about why this does actually better connect a vision of a more centralized, developed area Southfield?
Well, I, I think our elevator speech is to create a vibrant, twenty-four-seven pedestrian-friendly mixed-use environment, and, and this goes a long way to doing that. All we can control is the public infrastructure and the properties that we own. Uh, we're working closely with private developers on trying to market their space and, and show that this has some synergy, that the sum of the parts are greater than the whole. And, uh, by putting life on the street, this is very visible, people, whether they drive up and down Evergreen, or they, they walk out there during lunch or in the evenings, residents coming here, it's gonna be an attraction to people to come and together, and it's about creating that sense of place, and you can't create that sense of place if you don't have people on the street talking to each other. You, you can't, can't communicate as you're driving in different directions in your car. But as you know, if you're out there walking, uh, there's always that opportunity to say hello, how's it going, and, and strike up a conversation with people.
And I'll even say that, going back from what was said at a meeting a few months ago, you know, I, I think that this would encourage smarter use of the front lawn to make it more of a destination place, that we can think about, how, how do we creatively use that, how do we attract people to wanna, wanna stay in Southfield after, you know, the clock ticks five o'clock and they go home. I think that this, this creating a, still maintaining a green space, but creating an actual sense of place to go to would help us out in, in creating, uh, an exciting culture here in Southfield.
Um, next, uh, Mr. Lamb?
Yes. I don't disagree with futuristic, um, buying it. Lot looks good, it will be good, but, um, where's the money coming from? And how much is it gonna cost, by how it is?
We have, um, in your packet, uh, Mr. Crowe outlined, there's a sheet from HRC with, uh, an estimated cost, this is the, uh, engineering, uh, consultant figures. We wouldn't know how much it's gonna cost until we go out to bid, which doesn't mean you're gonna buy it, it just means you, you, you put out feelers, or you put out a request for proposals, and you get, uh, you get votes from people. So, uh, Mr. Crowe is only asking tonight for permission to seek bids, uh, for this, so that we have a better idea of what it's going to cost. We, we have a cost estimate, but, um, in these times, some of the construction companies are rather hungry and are very competitive, so we might be, you're getting more favorable figures than what's projected by HRC.
Well, I see the engineering proportion, uh, is over a hundred thousand dollars already.
Well, through the chair, that's, that's the total construction plus the engineering cost plus contingencies.
Yes, all right, that area, a hundred, okay, and you don't think it's gonna reach more than that?
Well, we, we think that these estimates are very conservative, we'll actually get better pricing, and it depends on if we want to add everything...
It'll come up to two hundred thousand?
Uh, I, I think it'll be closer to a hundred thousand.
All right. Now, our profit taxes, this year, are supposed to go down eight percent. Our taxes will, to the, to the people, will, how people go down, there'll be more foretold in short term. How can we even, uh, think of, all right, let me ask this way back up, what's the timeline? When is this all...
Well, if, if we could, we'd go out to bid this winter and construct in the spring, and there'd be no general funds that would be obligated towards this, construction of this job.
No general funds?
No general funds.
Where are the funds coming from?
Community Development Block Grant for ADA accessibility, the city center, um, there's some small amount of Metro Fund Acts, and then we have, uh, we have a tree fund that could cover some of the tree replacement. Those are some of the initial funding sources.
And you're taking money away from the, uh, city block plans that we give some cavities and...
Through the chair, I believe this money's been programmed specifically for ADA, um, compliance, so it's, it's, it's above and beyond what money's allocated towards the, uh, not-for-profits. This is a dedicated funding source just for ADA compliance. It's compliance for persons with disabilities. So wheelchair accessibility, this has been allocated in, in, in the funds, and if we don't spend it on this, then, you know, there's a chance we have to turn it back.
First of all, I never heard of that, but, okay, I agree, I can understand what you're saying, and you've already, um, proven that you get the funds for it.
We've already run this through our representatives at HUD, and they said this is an eligible cost, eligible project, and the money's sitting, sitting there waiting to be allocated towards a project like this.
That money is allocated to this already, and, uh, and the foretold should go on, and people stopping, and people not working, and the park is being built. That doesn't make sense.
Hello, anything else, Mr. Lamb?
Well, that's enough, isn't it? I, I hope everybody understands what I'm saying, um, because there's money, although there's money there for it, but that doesn't mean a thing to the people who live there.
All right, Mr. Fraser?
Yes, uh, several of us just returned from Boston, and we attended the National League of Cities, and once again, there was a, a presentation, it was a, was a workshop on, uh, The Less Move by our first lady, and, um, she wasn't there, but, uh, the project was talked about. Um, but, when you listen to the news, Michigan's one of the fattest states in the country. Uh, we, uh, childhood obesity is running rampant, uh, and this walk can, I'm supporting, I'm supportive of this walk, because it can give, uh, Parks and Rec an opportunity to be creative on, on some of their programs, on how to get kids off their job and out moving in their, in the day programs. And people used to sit on their front porch, when, when I was a kid, people sat on their front porch and watched the neighbors walk by and talk to the neighbors, "Well, this is our front porch, this is an opportunity for people to, uh, meet and, uh, meet their neighbors, meet, uh, new friends, friends they had never met before." But, um, I have been in situations where I've done some things, gone to places on a, a number of occasions, and then had someone come up to me and say, "You know, I've seen you here on several occasions," and strike up a conversation. So this, this is an opportunity to do that. Um, we keep saying that we're trying to make this area a walkable area, and then to hear somebody say, "Well, not on my land, not on my front porch," uh, I mean, that just really, um, troubles me a little bit. But we had a speaker at, uh, the National League of Cities that talked about how people, uh, meet each other, and, and they call it collision. Uh, uh, you keep bumping into people and, and meet new people, and, and it's, it's a way, the world is changing, and we've isolated ourselves so much that we've gotta get out of this isol- and we've isolated ourselves so much that we've got to get out of this isolation and get back to being communicative with other people, meet other people of different cultures. We're so proud of our diversity here in Southfield. I think this would be an opportunity to get everyone out and meet new people. So I'm really supportive of it.
Mr. Proctor?
Yeah. You know, I've always been protective of the front lawn in City Hall, it's been kind of called a sacred place. However, this, you know, has been in the planning stages for quite a while to have some kind of access to the front, and people could use it more often. That was the whole idea behind some of the plans from Parks and Rec. And I am absolutely for it. I live right next to England Park, and that is used extensively, day, night, till dark, they're still walking. And this gives an opportunity for people, maybe at the library, to come out and walk, or they're waiting for somebody in the library, I see them sitting by the fountain. And I think that's what City Hall should be all about, bring people into seeing what we do here at City Hall, where it is, even matter of fact, people don't even know where City Hall is. And so I'm for it. I'd like to explore, though, if you can maybe put some benches in just not all the way around, in certain areas. Maybe like the benches across the street where you see them off every, you know, I know people walk the sidewalk, they're not getting a buzz, they're just resting and then continuing on. And I think it's a good idea to maybe find some placements, and that'd be up to the individuals to plan that. It's all...
Mr. Dern.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Who's the walking, who's around the park?
Well, I know from my schooling, it's 5,280 linear feet in a mile. So I think we roughly figured out two and a half times is a mile. So if you divided that, it's about 1,800 feet, 1,500, 1,800 feet.
Okay. And I didn't hear a response in terms of shrubbery or, do you have short shrubs or...
At this time, all we're planning on doing is doing some tree replacement and tree infill.
Tall or short?
Just similar to what's out there.
My other concern has to do not so much as the project, which I do support, but it has to do with HRC and having them do in-kind services when we're going up for a bid. How do we make sure that we're not with any expectation that they may have a vision and we do the business, we're asking them for in-kind services? I think that's a parallel. I think maybe we should ask someone else.
Well, through the chair. Again, I was originally directed to work with HRC that did the cost estimates, and we actually reimbursed them for their time for that. We were talking about in-kind services, possibly with the departments, and then just minimizing the amount of work that HRC did for some of the testing and review. If we could get them to do some in-kind services, that would be great, but I understand what you're saying.
Through the chair, to our attorney, I'm not going to clear up the disagree.
I think, as we discussed this, we found there was sufficient expertise in-house to do much of what we initially had, you know, put together here with HRC. So I agree with you. I think makes it so we can find out what's left after the in-house staff has put it together, and we can see what we need at that point, but we certainly would keep that in consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowe, I have a couple of comments. Clearly, we're experiencing climate change, and, I mean, today, although it was foggy, people were walking. I was in a meeting this afternoon on this campus, and lots of people walking by. It was, here we are, December 3rd, so... But I really favor this project, and I, and actually, I'd like to see more. As I mentioned before, what I like about this is that it connects the world beyond, on the other side of Evergreen, to the library, to the Civic Center. And, you know, my, money weren't an object, my type dream would be to have a path from the back of the property where Lincoln ends, so that people on the east side of Southfield could walk to the Civic Center, to the library, to the Parks and Rec. There is a trail back there existing with woodchips, but it doesn't really connect. And this really is about a sense of place, so I certainly am in favor of this. But I have one technical or minor thing that you might want to look at. Years ago, there was a very, very large tree at the very southern end of, right there.
Yep.
And the tree was sort of ailing, but not to speed its demise, which eventually didn't have to come down. When the lawn was re-fulled out, a dip was made so that it would not interfere with roots of the tree. We now have, the tree has been gone for a number of years, and we have this dip, and it would seem to me that we wouldn't want the dip anymore.
Right, and through the chair, that was one of our observations when we actually walked out there, and I got the whole history about how we tried to save the tree. And part of the land balancing, as they scrape off, the area for the sidewalk would be leveled off over there.
Put into the dip. All right, what, yes, Mayor?
So will we be able, if someone coming out, spinning, across the street, will they be able to have access to it where...
Phase one, which is putting the loop in, there's an existing sidewalk that goes here that, you know, crosses into the whole loop. And then there's a couple places where it actually will touch the existing sidewalk. Future phase, when Evergreen Road gets redone, is another additional connections. Yeah, we don't want to throw good money against bad, so there's going to be like, the phase one, which will get 95 percent of it complete, and then areas in yellow indicate, when Evergreen Road gets redone, that's where the connections would be. And this is a possible future phase of making the library more accessible and their fountain and the patio, but at this time, we don't have the funding to consider that.
What we need tonight is a Rule 10 to, as in a motion, to authorize planner to go out and seek bids on this item. So, moved by Mr. Moss, for the Mr. Proctor for Rule 10. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have one opposition.
I don't know, there's two now.
Oh, I didn't hear either.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send us out for bids, and that it come back within a reasonable amount of time.
Mr. Crowe? All right, we have a motion by Mr. Proctor, supported by Mr. Fraser, to authorize planner to keep bids on the front lawn loop. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Murray?
Is the library anticipating in this project, or waiting until...
They're waiting until future.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Lamb?
Yes, I'm basically not opposed to all this, but the timing is wrong, just like all the others. The people, people that look at this, say, hey, I can't afford food, I can't afford to live, the city is spending a couple hundred thousand dollars for trees and sidewalks.
What are you going to tell them? What are you going to say? This is part of, hopefully, helping the development across the street, our sense of place.
Are they going to get across the street?
I don't know any of the neighbors across the street.
They take that money, that's what they're giving back to us. They take our money, the whole assessment here that they use, and they make donations to whatever project they want. And I'm a finisher. I'm going to tell these foreclosed people to contact Mr. Fraser.
And I'll tell them to come look at the park that we created out front, spent $150,000 for the park that we...
Yes, it was my idea.
Yes, right.
Yes. Something wrong with it?
No.
It's handicapped accessible too, at that time.
No, but the sidewalk will complement that park, make it easier for people to get to the park.
I don't say it won't. I didn't speak against the project.
You would, no. That's about as good as you can get.
Yes, not now. I said, not now. We don't have the money, even though it's grant money, we shouldn't do it yet.
But, I think one of the, you know, one of the things that we've done over a period of time is, we've built this into a campus. And we've advertised, and we've used the advertisement to say, a whole family can come here and spend a much of their day. Some can play ball, handball, tennis, they can swim in the summertime, they can do things. But there are some people that don't swim, they don't play handball, they don't play beach ball, but they do like to walk. So while the rest of their family is doing other activities, they can come out here and exercise and still continue to be a family. So this makes this campus a family-friendly place.
And we have one more, yeah?
My biggest, I suppose my biggest objection is, since we're in a narrow sidewalk, I find it a lot more acceptable, but I don't feel that.
Well, that may be an option if the bids come back extremely high, certainly.
It's nine to seven o'clock, and I don't know if we wanted to continue or...
Yeah, I want to continue, and we're going to finish this sign ordinance, the gas thing is very important. And then we need to discuss briefly calendar items as well. So I would like to move on to the proposed sign ordinance, Mr. Gardella and Mr. Conover forth. While they're getting ready, we have discussed the sign ordinance plenty. Tonight, we're just limiting this to the small piece on the retail LED signs. We're not talking about ground signs, pole signs, message boards, anything like that. This is just a little piece of it so that we can get help out to our gas station hours, particularly in the wear month when they're trying to change the prices in cold weather.
If I could start it, and then, I think that's kind of how we've worked out amongst ourselves. What I did here was, obviously, worked with Ed and St. Louis Kerry, and we went through, and we have made proposed changes, those are the bold capitalized changes, that you see 30 on page four and five, these are within the definitions of existing sign ordinance. And what this does now is permit LED-operated product price signs for gas stations. And it then goes through and puts the parameters of what the sign should look like. And so, for example, you know, you'll see that the first one talks about how often could that price sign change, and we'll come back to that. The second would talk about what's the brightness standard that would be permitted. And so there's a standard now that will be set forth within the ordinance, and basically that's what Mr. Gardella has come up with. The third one would be that there would be some kind of an automatic adjustment device within the sign itself, so that the brightness of the sign, product price sign, would change depending upon, if it's a cloudy day, nighttime, if it's a bright sign, and it would do that. The fourth section deals with a certification responsibility by the sign manufacturer, that this sign has been preset to the levels of brightness and so forth that we've established in the ordinance. The fifth one talks about if the sign malfunctions, so that we don't get something that aesthetically, you know, doesn't appear, something that we would desire, the whole sign will just go off. It'll go to basically a dark screen, as opposed to having a little bit here and this part out. And then finally, that there would be a non-glare panel, glass panel over the top, that obviously wouldn't reflect. So I think we've gone through those changes, and I think Mr. Gardella, obviously, who's the expert on this, is comfortable with what we've done, and the only discussion we still had was, how often can these change? That is a real pertinent issue when we get to the electronic message centers that we're coming back to with that ordinance in January. So we talked again, and we thought maybe the recommendation would be, let's be consistent here, so that the recommendation when we come in January will probably be somewhere in the area that can't change more than one time per minute. And so that's kind of what we're recommending here. And with that, obviously...
I don't know, Sue, you did such a good job with that, it's almost nothing for me to talk about, which is nice. But we are talking about allowing the gas stations to use them on their existing signs that we have now, as we discussed. The issues with the timing, I think probably once every 60 seconds, if you look at it, even the time to change the gas price on a computer is going to take you at least 30 seconds to even change the price. So 60 seconds, I mean, hopefully, our gas prices aren't going up and down every 60 seconds, maybe. Maybe. But that was really the only piece that we had left open, and I think consistency would help with our future talks, to have it consistent with what we may propose in the future. And so Sue pretty much outlined that better than I can.
We kind of wanted you to see in a study session what the language would look like, and if there's consensus, we'll see the ordinance amendment on for, next Monday, the 10th, for adoption and introduction. There also was discussion, and obviously we lead this to council, about doing this as an emergency ordinance, so that they could, the gas stations could order equipment and maybe get them in time to be of assistance if we have a bad weather, bad weather, winter weather. So that's another option. But right now, it will be on next Monday.
Mr. Moore?
Are we grandfathering any of this?
We're not, we are not talking about the height of signs, nothing. All we're talking about now is an existing gas station can take an existing sign that's permitted, or been given to the DBA, and they can now go LED on the product price sign. That's all we're discussing.
Just that section, just this section of the price. We're not talking about anything else on the...
Nothing else changes.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? If not, I want to get a consensus.
Yes.
Phil Lamb? Yes, yes. We're not moving anything, we're just doing a consensus tonight. This will come back on the 10th?
Oh, okay.
You're of the agree?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, but I would like for us to review sign signs and full-size LED signs.
We are.
Definitely, definitely.
Okay, and I agree, so we have a consensus. Before we adjourn, we need to have changed the schedule slightly.
I'm sorry.
Before we adjourn, we need to change the schedule slightly. We had a number of things, very heavy-duty things, that were tentatively scheduled for January 28th.
I'm sorry.
You think?
Well, I'm actually going to...
I'd like to get through it.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So we can get in there. So what we're attempting to do is move things off of the 28th agenda, and put them either on January 14th. We have a COW study, a COW scheduled for that night. We can do a COW and a special meeting, so that we can have the public hearing on the Brown Field, as well as on the funeral home of the property matter up on 12 Mile. Also, I would like to add a meeting to the schedule for December 17th, that the Monday is unscheduled, and it would be a study session. And I, unless there, we will, we're going to vote on that next Monday, right, to set that meeting?
We can do it tonight.
Or we can do it tonight with the Rule 10?
With the Rule 10.
All right. I'm sorry?
What is the consensus?
We have several things to discuss. I have a request from Mr. Proctor to discuss the travel policy. We want to bring back the Public Arts Commission, another, further discussion on that. We want to, I wrote them down, check my notes. We want to review the taxi cab, where we are with the taxi cab licensing. And we have some code alterations, additions to code that were approved by the Neighborhood Services Committee in November, and need to come to the full council as a report from the Neighborhood Services Committee, the full council, so that if the council agrees, they can be adopted in January. Those are the things that are on the agenda. I have a... I have Mr. Sherritt, at some point needs to do some year-end budget adjustments, and it might be that evening, or else...
Or the tenth.
Or the tenth. So, that's why we're meeting, proposed meeting on the seventeenth of December.
Is that the only change, and do you want to change?
The fourteenth is scheduled as a study session. We're proposing to change it to study sessions and a special meeting for two site plan requests.
For January fourteenth?
Yes, actually, Brown Field, yeah, January fourteenth. On the schedule as a COW.
Okay.
Okay?
So how much community?
So I would entertain a rule ten to amend the schedule, if someone would do that.
So moves to board.
All right, so moved by Mr. Fraser, and put by Mr. Moss, for the rule ten. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Then I would entertain a motion to set a COW meeting, committee of the whole meeting for December seventeenth, and to call for a special meeting on, in addition to the COW meeting on January fourteenth, two thousand seventeen.
I mean, so moves, I support, whatever.
Moved by Mr. Fraser, put by Mr. Moss, all those in favor?
Aye.
So it's a COW and a special, is that...
Right.
And the second one would be the regular?
Right.
A regular meeting, not a COW?
No, no, the second, we already have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for January fourteenth, so you're talking about special meetings prior to?
Yeah.
So what time do you want that to start?
Well, I...
We already have a meeting scheduled, the COW.
But is it a regular, so that you can take a vote, you're actually, because that's a public hearing?
We're going to have a special meeting, and then we're going to have a COW. Do, do, we have a COW scheduled.
Do you want to just make that a regular?
Well, I wasn't quite sure, because we may have other things to discuss that night, so I wanted to leave the options open.
Well, we could change this.
But if you have, you just scheduled a public hearing on the Brown Field for, for January fourteenth.
Exactly.
So you need a regular meeting on that night to accommodate the public hearing.
Regular meeting or special meeting is just...
Right, right.
Well, I was corrected by Ms. Banks, I needed to call it a special meeting.
Well, I didn't know about the public hearing being scheduled.
Oh, okay.
So, do you want to amend the, the council agenda to have a COW start at whatever time, and then at seven, have a regular meeting, occur to accommodate a public hearing?
Right, that's exactly what we...
Yes, okay. What time are you, you looking at?
We'll say five, five thirty.
Or the COW?
And then if we have to, we'll see what the agenda, I'm not going to meet just in...
So we have to, we have to make another motion, then, to change the time of the meeting at all.
Right, we'd be, we'd be saying that the meeting that's currently scheduled at seven will be a regular meeting.
Right.
And we're setting a five-thirty COW.
Right.
So that would be the motion.
Right.
So moves, support.
Do we need a rule ten first?
Didn't you just do a rule ten?
Yeah, so you're amending the motion.
We, the maker of the motion and the supporter...
If you amend it, I think that's very clear now, what is being requested.
All right, do what we have to do, so we can't think it's sort of hard for me.
Yeah. All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We need about a five-minute break here, so that Nancy can get set up in the other room.
Four minutes.
So we need a latatory break, or anything like that, to answer your, some folks are handing out a few notes, really, if I don't understand.